We will call the meeting to order. Clerk, please call the room.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
The mayor couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in on the duties. Is there any addition to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue here. I will say that the mayor asked that the mayor's report be delayed until he returned, so we'll table that for tonight. Next, we have our consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes of the December 16, 2013 meeting, approval of minutes of the January 2, 2014 special meeting, resolution providing for employee for the wastewater department, resolution of employment for a police officer, resolution of employment for a telecommunications operator, resolution of promotion to assistant telecommunications supervisor, approval of a liquor license to University Amoco, Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, and the Gardens, and finally, approval of claims in the amount of $440,126.84. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the room.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes. Next, we have our public appearances. We have the Car Collector's Unlimited representative here to discuss about the use of the square.
Okay, thank you, and it's Collector Cars Unlimited.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but we would like permission to use the square again for our 32nd, 31st Annual Car Show, 30-something. We'd be using the square and the streets adjacent to the square.
Okay. The police chief had mentioned that we usually require a request that you have some kind of a map that shows everybody what you'd like to close, but can you just explain it to us tonight, which streets?
We would be going, let's see, I've lived here too long, and I still don't know the names of the streets.
I can help you a little bit, Steve.
Okay, we would be going east, we'd be going west, to the alley by Red Rock.
On Broadway.
Okay, Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
Then we would be going north on Main, to the intersection, north on Court, to the intersection, and west on Broadway, to the intersection.
And you're closing just half the street then, is that right?
No, we're closing the entire street.
The entire street, okay. And which is similar to what we did last year.
Same thing we've done last year.
Any questions?
The only reason we're requesting a map is that, to say it's the same as last year, I got too many new guys, they don't remember what last year was.
Right.
Yeah, and if we have rain like we normally do, we're gonna have a Plan B to open up the side streets, if we are able to.
I'd make a motion to approve, provided there's a map provided to the police chief.
Motion by Hammuss?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Next, we had a request from Dan Tudor, is he here tonight?
He's here.
Okay, not being here, we'll move on. A request from the Fairfield Volleyball Club to give a presentation.
We just wanted to express that the volleyball courts and racquetball courts that are currently available at Roosevelt or Recreation Center are well-used and well-loved. I think there was some impression that they were not in great shape and that, but we consider them excellent facilities. We're very happy to use them, we're very happy with their, and I think they're actually well-used. We'd like to get some documentation on exactly how much they're used, but it would be a great pinch to us if they were not included in the plan for the new recreation facilities. They've been in use for, what, the last 25 years?
At least.
At least. Our group has been using them on a regular basis, Tuesdays and Thursdays, sometimes Saturdays, and sometimes we have multiple courts in use. And also, we'd like to expand, we're attracting new players now. Actually, Ted Wallace and I went up to a tournament where we won the Iowa State Championship, and we'd like to start having tournaments here as well. So, that's the part I wanted to express.
I've also been playing off and on for about 20 years, and it's really the only part of the rec center that I use regularly and ongoing, and it's also the only way that I get really strenuous exercise. So, it's really important to me that we maintain that facility and have that facility for use. It's also one of probably the few opportunities that I have as a woman to compete against these hard-driving, hard-hitting men, and I love playing with them, it's always fun. When my family comes from out of town, they always want to come play volleyball, unfortunately, a lot of times during the summer, they happen to come during the week that the rec center is closed, and they're always very, very disappointed. So, it is an attraction to people, and they're from Houston, and they don't have the ability to play down there, and they love playing when they come up here. So, I think it's an important attraction for people from out of town as well.
Okay, thank you.
It's just not volleyball, it's also racquetball, it's the only racquetball courts in town, and I play racquetball two or three times a week, so I mean, I don't know, I had no idea when this thing was going in that there was any idea in tearing the courts out and not replacing them, it just seems pretty absurd to me, just my opinion.
And just two things, just, again, the recognition for the fact that this club has been around for 25, 30 years, and also the concern about how much it costs to tear down that place. They're good courts, they're in good condition, and we're hearing rumors of extreme costs to tear down a solid building like that, so.
Thank you, Steve. Well, there's lots of rumors. We do have a representative from our committee that's organizing for the new construction, and Tom, would you like to come up and maybe you can give us a little understanding of what is being planned in terms of these courts?
Sure.
Could you go up there, please?
So, first off, I'd like to say, you know, thanks for expressing your interest in the courts and where we're at in the process. I think the city council knows that the process is much further along for the pool. We've actually hired the design to be done, we're pretty far down the roads on that. On the gymnasium side of it, we presented a plan last July that stated and showed what the plan would look like, and I think all of you have a copy of that. That would be the very top one.
Be this?
Yep. And so, with that, you will notice, you know, we described the features of it, and that the largest thing we did was, of course, enhance the entrance, consolidate our entrance down to one spot versus having two, potentially three, if we added the gymnasium. So, we were looking at long-term operating costs. And so, the initial solution was, based on some data we had on usage, which I think Park and Rec Board can clearly give you that usage, those numbers are out there, we've got them, we've seen them. The courts were coming out, they were mostly being used for children's programs, some arts and crafts-type things, not that they wasn't getting used for racquetball or volleyball, but the use was not as high as what we would have expected for the property. What you will see on the next three pages, I mean, when we went through the design phase, we talked about what do we need, what do we look for, what are we sharing with the public that we were doing, there are some options out there. As with all things, money plays a part. And so, as we were trying to think through the cost side of it, and what we were spending for it, you know, we did take them out of the plan, not that they couldn't be in the plan, but in what we were presenting to the city council, to private donors, to the county, they were out. So, obviously, we've heard the concerns from some of the patrons that are using it today. If I could finish, then I'll let you come right back up. So, I mean, we do have some alternatives. If we look at what we're doing today, and where are we at today, I would say, from a private fundraising, the last time I talked, it was a little less. So, we have the $3 million in the city bonds, we've raised 4.2 million in private donations, we have the county vote on March 4, so we're hoping for a million dollars there. Tomorrow, we're delivering our CAT grant request to the state, asking for 1.8 million. If we get all of that, that gets us about 9.8 million for a project, excuse me, it gets us to about 10 million for a 10.4 million dollar project now, with the costs that they came out with this last week and a half. So, we're $400,000 short. That number doesn't include currently one, two, or three courts. So, we had asked for an opportunity to hear from the city council, from residents, you know, is there enough will for that to be out there? And if it is, we just need to add it to the cost and try and raise it, one place or another. So, that's where we're at.
Tom, do you have any idea how much these different options are priced at?
The one, the only one I don't have is if, and the facility and the task force met, I'm sorry, I was not at the meeting, but I, speaking on behalf of them, if you look at the very next slide, that shows putting one court internally on the west end of the gymnasium. And that's the only one we don't have a cost figure for. To be able to get that cost figure, we need to have Newman Munson come in and inspect the existing, which they didn't do as a part of their early process was a demolition, so they didn't inspect it. So, they can't give us that. If you go to the next drawing, where, and these are available to anybody, by the way, and we'll show them, actually, you guys can pass them around. When you look at the one with one court on the north side, just using the same formula as they've been using all along, one court is about 170,000, two courts is about 380, and we didn't look. If you would, so, two courts is, here's a single court, this one has it inside the track, single court outside the building, double courts outside the building. So, we're here to ask you all to help us make that decision. You know, I think the task force and me personally, when we look at consolidating down that front entrance, improving the look, taking advantage of better labor costs, I, we think the existing courts need to come down. The question becomes, when and how, and what else would we do? And then, what would be the cost for that, and how do we raise the money for it? So, that's kind of where the task force is at right now. So, I'm gonna, questions from council, and then I'll respond to questions from everybody, if you want, however you want.
You said 170 for one court, I didn't catch what, for two, how much was it?
380.
280. I probably said 380, excuse me, 280. That'd be the last page on this.
And is it something that you need to decide before we start? I mean, the courts there on the north side of the facility, is that something that could be added later, or you really need to decide it from the initial design?
The adding to the north side clearly is a phaseable project that could be done at any time. You might recall from an earlier discussion, we're trying to make that whole north side a phaseable, if you needed to add to it in the future, you could, that's the current design for that.
Okay.
We have been contacted, obviously, from folks, and that, you know, the preference is, don't take it down at all. We get that, we understand it, but from a cost-benefit standpoint, it would make sense to bring them down and construct new ones, if we're going in that direction.
So, responding to your question about phasing, that was very definitely something that we had talked to Newman Munson about specifically, and it's that north side, the north side is where the ice cream, the dairy bar is, that side is the north side. So, we looked at that, the western, if you look at your second page, which has one court on the internal part of the running track, that option, that particular option's going to cut out, we are looking at putting more glass at the end of that western wall, and allowing the light to come in, you know, which allows lower costs on your lighting and all that sort of thing, as well as with the purchase of that land, there's potential that those grounds past there might be utilized for other park and rec options. And having that glass there, you'll be able to see, you know, whether there are outdoor volleyball, sand volleyball lots, or, you know, there's several ideas there. So, one of the things that we really looked at, when we visited the Kirkwood facility, was the openness of the overall, when you have the courts, the running track, and how open, you had one person who could see all that, because we really hope to have the drop-down nets, they have very see-through nets now, not the netting itself isn't see-through, but it's, you can see through, you know, throughout the facility.
Those were the same ones we provided to you back last July, same visuals, same, you can see all the way through.
And this also, by opening up that lobby space, you can see into the pool, you can see into the weight area, which is the old school building, thereby, again, having the one manager or what have you working that lobby desk. So, all those options, that north side is up for, you know, very definitely up for grabs for, you know, phasing.
John, to answer your question, your question was, do we need to decide tonight?
Right.
I think the answer to the question is, tonight, we don't have to decide tonight, but we have to decide fairly soon, has to be, two things, one, we need to know how much money we need to be raising and whether we start the project. So, when we think about the timing that's coming, you know, we see March 4 as a big date, it really is a decision date there or within weeks of that, we really need to be making decisions about our go-forward, because we want to be moving on the pool by then, if we can. But that's gonna be a question of, have we raised enough funds to finish the project?
Any other questions from the council?
I could provide just a little bit more background. Some of the volleyball people ask, can we keep that building intact? So, I looked into that, I talked to the architect and the design and build companies. The thinking is that by providing this new space, you minimize operational expenses, you have one person who can see from the entire length of the facility, so the numbers were crunched, and it's over $100,000 a year savings, maybe more, like 170-something. So, even though it costs more to take something out and then replace it, long-term, you've created a situation where operationally, you've lowered cost. So, I feel like that's pretty solid in terms of design plan. I don't remember being told, I remember seeing this and being told the racquetball courts would be in there somewhere, so I think this new design, when they're back, is something I'm more comfortable with, because I like this project, because it adds to our recreation options, rather than, we don't want to take anything away, we want to add to it. I don't think we need a vote or anything, but I think just to say, this is a good direction to move in, and there are other options also. Apparently, MUM is completely open to moving one of the courts or two courts to their rec center. They would like to have them, they just don't have a budget to do that right now. So, I know a concern was during construction, where would you guys play? I like to play sports weekly, and it would be really sad to lose that opportunity, so maybe one option is to move a court or two to MUM, could be its own little fundraising project to get that done, so that there would be no discontinued use, that you guys would always have a court available. So, lots of options, lots of possibilities. I feel good about these plans, to put them on, I like it on the north side, keeps the visibility of the whole structure intact, but then, there are all these other options too. So, Ken Daly, who directs the MUM rec center, said he would love to have racquetball courts, all they need is to build a little addition to their rec center to house them. So, that's something I think that could be explored more as well.
Any comments from the committee then? John, you had a question?
Just, I've been playing this, you know, for almost 30 years now, twice a week.
John, yeah, if you come up to the mic, because we're on TV here.
Sometimes, three times a week, I've been playing volleyball, and I know, a few years ago, they stuck this gymnastic thing in there, and since then, the usage went down. Now, I know there's a thing you're supposed to sign, and I'm horrible at signing that, and a lot of people are, so I don't know if the statistics are based on that, but I don't know what your statistics are based on, but I know, very often in the past 20 years, there's been people playing three courts at a time, and since we put that little gym thing in, it's gone down quite a bit. So, you know, you can say, yeah, there's usage of the gym, but that's put in a couple years ago, and before that, the courts were used quite a bit more, and I think they'd be used more, this gentleman here says he's an avid racquetball player, you know, and I think there's other people that would come over more if we, you know, sometimes, what I think happened is, they put that gym in, and often, they have it closed because the pool, you know, uses, when they have meets, they use the courts and they close them down, so, you know, there hasn't been a whole lot, in my opinion, respect for the usage of the courts sometimes, there's a lot of different reasons, they'll close them down and won't even say anything to anybody beforehand. So, I think that they are a very, you know, well-used in the past, and I think more so than in recent years, just because of adding that little gym thing, you know, it's my observation, having played there so many times.
Another comment? Go ahead.
This, the vote that was done for the town for the funding of this was done with the idea, I think we all had it, that it would increase recreational facilities in Fairfield, and we really feel blindsided by this, this is, it feels quite unfair to us that we would vote for something that would actually decrease, you know, our recreational opportunities and decrease something that is of value, I think, in Fairfield. People in our group have many ideas of other ways of putting this facility together, no disrespect to them, I'm sure there's an incredible amount of work that's gone into planning it, but, you know, we're creative people, and there's many different ways of putting a building together that might preserve that and preserve all the good things that will come from this design. So, we wanted the opportunity to maybe present some of those ideas and not have this as a foregone conclusion to have that front entrance way done that would take out this facility, because we really don't want to miss it for any amount of time, and, you know, the vagaries of raising more money or moving it to MUM seems like a chance we don't want to take when we have a very good facility, you know, in hand right now that we don't want to lose.
Okay, one last point.
You have a perfectly good building that you're gonna tear down, and the reason you're gonna do it is because of yearly operational costs. I don't understand that. I don't get it, and maybe there's a very good logical reason for it. I'd like to see what those operational costs are and why you can't have one desk and one person at a different location. I mean, there are creative ways to solve this, and it just makes absolutely no sense to me to tear down a perfectly functional building.
Well, I'll explain where the numbers came from real quick. Because of the way the courts were added, there are desks at either side, there's one for the indoor pool, and then there's a separate one for Roosevelt. If you were to add this building, you'd have a third desk. This was a separate building, which at some point was considered, so there are three positions. You price that out compared to one who could, in this new design, take care of the Roosevelt Center, the indoor pool, and this entire gym, that produces cost savings. And it's also better long-term planning to really build this for the future.
So, when I walk into a hospital, there's one desk, and then I go to that desk, and from that desk, I go to different places. I don't understand why there can't be some kind of creative solution like that, I don't see why. You think there has to be a desk at each little individual?
I mean, right now, we could walk in through the pool area, very, half the time I do, when I go to play racquetball or wallyball, I go in through the pool area and then have to go over to the other area to sign in. So, the fact that there's two entrances now, you could immediately change that to one, everybody could come through one entrance, it'd be very easy.
Okay, I think you've made a good point. Tom, with the committee, you know, I think one of the issues here is that we're quite advanced here in our whole kind of architectural plan.
Yeah, which is, that's what's disappointing, that no one bothered to reach out and talk to the people that were using that facility, and instead just said, we're gonna eliminate it. That's really discouraging, and I personally have been responsible for donating tens of thousands of dollars to civic improvements over the past 10, 15 years, and so, you know, the one thing that I actually really use, you know, I don't even get asked about.
Okay. Tom, did you have a response to that?
I got a couple of comments, and then I'll, and, yeah, the first one is, we hear you. We hear you. The, you're right, the committee has been working a little over 20 months on Phase Two, 20 months. We have had at least a dozen public meetings where we've shown these plans, where we've talked in the public, they've been in the paper. So, to think we're blindsiding anybody, I am just personally, don't buy it, because we've been out there. Now, have we talked to every citizen? You're right, we have not. So, tonight, we're hearing you, we understand the challenges of the whole project, right? I believe this project is happening. I believe it's gonna happen, it's a question of when, and part of it's, we're gonna continue to try and raise money, we're not there yet. If we get everything that continues, we're only about 400,000 short, had one or two, we're 600,000 short, or seven, we just gotta get there, and we gotta do it as a community. And so, we're here, we're hearing what you're saying, we think there's opportunity to change the plan, because it's not that far along that we can't do that, but we're gonna have to kind of consensus soon.
Tom, would you be willing to invite that group to your next meeting to at least hear their ideas? They said there's a lot of talk about creative ideas of rethinking the entrance.
We're interested, we're interested in all ideas, obviously, we're willing to do that, and.
Jane, do you ever come in on that?
Yeah. So, in regards to, you know, in regards to looking at the additional ideas for the design, so, one of the reasons we are at, these are just schematic drawings, very basic, very simple, and we stopped at a certain point with Newman Munson, so that we were not on their clock, dollar-wise, as architects. So, there had to be a point where we said, okay, we have some basic ideas, the three courts and the running track, and we, it was important for the operational costs, so that was. so that was, that aspect was discussed of which, that's what we're discussing now. And we came to the drawings that you see. When we, my guess is that when we reach March and the vote and hear about the CAT grant and have the funding available, someone's going to change us to a green light, back to working with the architects to then have more community meetings. We, with Newman Munson, we had like five, we had five community meetings right here that were open to everyone in the public. So, and many people did come and, you know, we played with their little cubes and everything and laid things out. So that will come again because we're not down to those final drawings.
So the committee, at that time, once we do get the green light, it's conceivable that the committee could at least come and share their creative ideas.
Absolutely. And people can join us for those meetings, but it probably won't happen again until closer March.
Right.
Because, I mean, we're to that point where we're just kind of in a stand, we're in a standstill from a design phase and we are in the process of fundraising, so.
Good, Jane. Dan, did you have a point that you wanted to make?
Well, I've been, I'm a task force member, been on this for two and a half years, so I, I've watched this evolve and change, you know, all along. All kinds of different ideas and constituent groups with input. And I've, I understand, we don't want to eliminate someone's recreational usage, in this case, racquetball, wally ball. But I think all we're, I think there's two things I just want to add. One, sort of an answer to your question, I, it's hard to envision what we're describing until you see these, what these kind of places look like. Probably no one's been there many more than I have, just by life experience. It's not just a desk that you're talking about. A, a large recreational facility, modern facilities, with children especially, you have to have visible contact. So they're built openly so an adult, for, for safety reasons, can see the facility. You try not to build anything that you can't see. So you don't want to obstruct views. And that's, that's really important. It's not just an issue of a desk, I always saw a bristle, it's not just the desk. It's visibility, supervision, safety is what you have to accommodate. And I don't want anybody to think that we deliberately would want to add cost at a task force. We're the ones out raising the money. We really don't want to do that. But it would just, we just know now and confirmed and actually pushed pretty hard by the professionals that don't make that mistake, going back to Michael's point. If, if you save a little money on the front end and you're, the council has built something that's going to cost considerably more money for the next 50 years to operate, you will regret that. The community's going to regret that decision. So it actually has made it more difficult on our part, raising money, knowing we have to deal with that problem, which by the way, it wasn't that many months ago that the council's main concern was operating expenses and, and that's what we addressed. We were trying to make sure that, that the city would have something that could operate within a reasonable budget. So that's the other part of that. But I, it's, I think you're probably, it's hard to envision maybe, maybe conceive some of the other kind of drawings on that. And that, that really does make a big difference. So that's really the, the other, and the other point I want to make is, I think we're, we're splitting hairs a little bit here. And I think it's become clear, no one really wanted to do away with this, it was a matter of how to reconfigure it. So all we're really talking about is there's some interruption of your weekly games and so forth for a period of time to construct something. That, I think the council can make their own decisions, but it would seem some, you have to give a little for the sake of the greater good. And in this case, what are you picking between something that will not, in the long run, serve the community well operationally so that you can continue to have one activity for a period of time that, that we're talking about preserving? I can tell you, I was at lots of meetings, we had never had it, that this would never be reconfigured in a way that, there would be no wally ball and, and racquetball, it would just be a matter of when. And some of this is a little bit, working with Ken Daly and so forth, we don't, didn't want to get out ahead of the, you know, his position on that, you know, he's in a, you know, he can't speak for the university and so forth and so. So all this is a rolling decision-making process and there's always been communication issues of who knows what, when, even within the task force, that, that's a difficult thing. So all I can say is, we're, I can tell you that from my own experience, we always had, when I say we, at least, many of us always had it that this would be put back in, in the best way possible, but the design processes Jane's referring to had to be stopped at some point because we're, you're spending money, you got to just sort of stop, raise money and then find out where we're at it in the end. So there, there you go. And I hope, I hope my description of this, sort of the open side of this makes more sense if you, if you see one, you would understand. Or talk to people who, who have those facilities.
I think you've well said. At, at this point, I, I think we are, we, we want to move ahead with our meeting, the rest of our meeting. But I, I would, I would say, from my side, first of all, I would encourage those passionate about this sport to, to be part of that committee as much as possible. I, you know, they are doing such a great job, it's, we almost consider them professionals who are, you know, building this for us. But they are just citizens from our community who've really come together in a great way to, you know, create something great here. And so ultimately, you know, as Dan said, I mean, it, it's going to be a, just simply a matter of some time perhaps during the construction that, that it wouldn't be available if that, if the plan that is already drawn up continues. But we're still early enough in the, in the stage that we can hear creative ideas, you can have input. And ultimately, either way, it's going to be a matter of money. And so if you're passionate about this, I would encourage you to, to join the committee and help them raise the money that's needed to, to do this. Because I, I think we all agree, it's a great asset for a community and we need more people passionate about this kind of, you know, this kind of sport. So we'll let it go at that. Okay?
At this point, all I'd like to hear is that there's a commitment to a public meeting, so those of us that haven't heard about this can...
Tom, how are, how are your meetings presented usually? You announce it in the paper or how does?
On the city website.
On your website, on the city website, in the paper.
City Facebook page.
In the city website, on the paper and in the radio. So if you just watch that, you can call city hall and ask for an update as well if you, if you're wondering. But you're probably going to meet again next, when?
We don't actually have another meeting on the schedule. The next big thing for us is of course, working on the vote.
Right. And so after March 2nd, there'll be some, some meeting scheduled?
Create a meeting and obviously we could have a facilities group meeting. We'd love to hear the ideas and share with the whole.
Okay. That's great.
Just a reminder though, that I talked to the task force about being diligent about communicating with council because ultimately it's going to be us voting on the plan. And little minutia, that's up to you guys, that's why you guys are really getting in there and doing it and we appreciate that so much. But big things like this, I was under the impression when I first heard this, no, they're absolutely going to be in the plan. And then I heard, no, maybe. And so I think the direction from the council would be, I don't want to make a vote or anything, but I think we're all pretty much on the same page. We would like to see them in the plan and that would be the kind of plan that we would vote to approve rather than one that scrap them.
Also, Your Honor, a few of us, I think, are going to be working on a possible alternative to keep operations going. I don't want to say too much about that because we're just really, have talked about it on a rudimentary level, but that's something that a few of us are going to be looking into with some partners potentially. But like a lot of cases, the, the potential partners would have to include yourselves because of course financing would not be there to actually do the action unless you helped us. So I think it's going to have to be us helping you by you helping us help you, if that makes any sense, but.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we, we're going to move on to our next agenda item then. So next we have an action item to set a public hearing for the community development block grant downtown revitalization grant. And that's going to be on, scheduled for next Monday, January 20th at noon.
So moved.
Took it.
Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, the same sign. Okay, then we'll move on to the next point, a resolution, electing to exercise jurisdiction for subdivision plat approval outside the city limits of Fairfield. Prairie Lake subdivision phase two, part of sections 19 and 30 plat. Kevin, explain what that means.
This is, once again, a county subdivision, well, Ed, do you want to have a couple?
You do a great job.
You go ahead and I'll follow up. You go ahead.
There's a little, we're trying to separate a four or five acre piece and it's in the county, I, I think it'll stay in the county, but you folks have your input, so this is that point, then we go back to the county supervisors.
And we have no objection. This, once again, is our, the two mile radius, we have no objections.
Uh-oh.
John, you want to speak to it for a second?
Yes, please.
I didn't see you out there, I was looking.
Maybe we do.
We got some emails from the county attorney and county engineer that they wanted to review this further. There's a second plat and that's what you're asking the council to approve. It's a minor subdivision, but there's about four parts of the minor subdivision checklist that the county attorney and the county engineer wanted checked. I think some of it has to do with paid taxes and stuff, but anyway, I can get with you on that if you want.
John, are you suggesting we, we table this until this county finishes?
If you could, if you could table it one more meeting, our recommendation has been before and it will probably be again, that yes, we sign off on this. But there, on the second plat, it pointed out that on the first plat, there was a piece of ground that actually belonged to the city that got mixed in with the subdivision plat split and it shouldn't have been there. The engineer that did the revised plat came back and asked, is this something the city would be willing to negotiate as far as the parcel that was there that really wasn't theirs to split? And I don't know what the answer is to that yet because we're, we're going to have French Reniker take one more look at it. We're going to satisfy the county engineer and the county attorney that what the developer wants to do, their intent was the same last summer as it is now, and I think that's true. But right now, we need another week or two to make sure that that all gets mixed between the two government bodies.
Exactly. So while we have no objection, we would request a tabling of it tonight so we can look into some of these details per the county's request.
Move to table to our next meeting, which would be the 27th of January.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we'll move it to the 27th. Next we have the first reading of an ordinance for rezoning 1005 West Broadway from R2 to B1. This was a planning and zoning recommendation.
It was indeed, Your Honor. unanimous recommendation by planning and zoning, a warehousing type structure, all seems to be in order.
Move to approve.
I have a question on it. Is it just half of that lot, the way that it was described at the planning and zoning meeting, it was just the western part of the, of that, that lot area?
It was a little bit odd, I thought too, because it was, it appeared, half of it had been zoned and the other half had not. I mean, there was an in and out about it, but it seemed all...
Is that, is that what you're asking? Is that what you're asking, Keith? Is just half of that lot?
Would you please come up to the mic, John?
Sorry, I, I didn't...
I don't know exactly how it happened, but...
I don't know how, but I missed you sitting out there.
Yeah. At one time, apparently, there was actually two lots.
Mm-hmm.
And the two lots were combined.
Oh, okay.
But the zoning was never changed one way or the other.
On the overall lot.
On the overall lot.
Right.
So it left half a lot at B2 and half a lot at the residential.
Okay. Okay, so you're just, you're just clearing up the fact that, that that one lot at one time was a certain zoning and now you're, you, you had it changed and then it just had been neglected to do the other portion of it.
Yeah, apparently, the prior owners, when they, they just never took in, switched anything over on that lot.
That's, that's where my confusion came from.
Yeah, it should have, when the lots were combined, it should have fell into the same designation of the superior lot.
Yeah, it should have, so, okay.
Mr. Hyde?
Thank you.
So, do you want to tell us at all, what do you plan to build there or?
Put up a storage building.
Storage.
Right now, I have inventory that's outside, used inventory. I want to get that up under a roof. There's been apparently some concern about mosquitoes in the area and I want to bring, use tractor tires and stuff, I want to put them under a roof to take care of that issue for the, I want to be a good neighbor as well.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Keith.
Any other discussion in, on this topic? Any other point?
I would request a waiving of the readings if that were to be possible to the pleasure of council.
I'll make a motion to waive the readings.
Second.
Motion by Hammers, second by Ledger Kaelin, to suspend the rules. Please call the roll.
Hammers?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
No. I, I don't, I think, my personal feeling is, is not to, you know, for zoning things to, you know, give the public a time to consider it, but probably all right either way, so. All right, so the, the motion passes and so now we'll take a vote on the actual passage of the ordinance. Please call the roll.
I may need to make a motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We need a motion for that.
I'll move to approve.
Hammers? Who was it? Hallie? And second by Hammers?
Either one. We both said it.
Okay. Oh, now, please call the roll, sorry.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the social host ordinance. We'll open a public hearing on this. Is there anyone here to comment on the social host ordinance? Okay, seeing no, no input from the public, we'll close the public hearing and... Your Honor? Yes?
I would request a waiving of the readings on this item as well, if it be to the pleasure of council.
Any takers?
No. The thing about this is, this is already the law of the land because it's law in Jefferson County.
Yeah.
So technically, this is just show of support for us to do this.
Right.
But, I don't know, there's no rush. I mean, if it's already the law, why rush it? Then it would take, you know, deprive us of the pleasure of voting again next meeting. That's...
So will it entertain a motion to move this from the second to the third reading?
I'll move from, to second.
To say so moved.
Yeah, that's what I want to do.
Second.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hallie. Please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes. And we also have a, the second reading of the amendment to our sign ordinance.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would request a waiving of the readings on this one, on the legitimate basis that there are about limitations on the planning level that we know we all agree to. We've read it a couple of times and it just, you know, someone could come in with an application according to our current rules and if they were to do so, we would have to of course allow that application to pass through after the review of it and it could be over the numbers that we have agreed on. Opportunistic moment for someone.
Perhaps before we take a, a motion, if there is one, on waiving the rules, perhaps Perhaps before we take a motion, if there is one, on waiving the rules, perhaps we could open a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, do we have a, we have a...
I'll give council a chance to vote, and I will make a motion to waive the readings on this motion, to the final reading.
Okay. Motion by Hammers, second by Ledger Kaelin. Please call the roll.
Hallie? Oh, no, that was Hammers' one. Sorry. Sorry about that. Hammers!
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yeah.
Revelinsky?
No.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Then I'll take a motion to pass this ordinance to the, for third and final, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I think it was Hamilton motion, and second by Hammers, right? No.
No.
I think he was first.
This doesn't make...
Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We have on our agenda city attorney report. John, did you have something for us tonight?
I'll do your closed session.
Okay, that's fine. Then, we have four committees listed here, four committee and board reports. At our work session last Saturday, we did not get the opportunity to hear from our committees. The idea was, at that time, to hear some visioning for the coming year, any thoughts, any broad, kind of broad pictures, as well as, you know, items that were, you know, pressing or, you know, on our, on our mind as we enter our new phase here for 2014. So we will start off with Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee.
Well, one item that's not big picture, that just needs to be addressed, I didn't see it get on the agenda, though, was the MUM waste. So maybe we should just put that on the next agenda?
Yes, it should be. I apologize, that should have been on the agenda tonight.
Well, the committee discussed, MUM has a few properties on, few homes on their, their property that they prefer to do their own trash collection, and we didn't feel the need to force them to do the city trash collection. If they could handle it themselves, there's no benefit or anything either way. So committee said, fine, you can handle that yourself. So we'll get that on the next agenda as an action item. The next two items are projects for this year. Ongoing tree, the tree plan. I asked the committee if they were comfortable adding a few items to our updated tree ordinance I hope to get ready by February, March. They include banning tree topping inside the city limits. I was told by the DNR and Arborist, it's very damaging to trees. When you cut just the top off, that really negatively affects their health. And these are, these are points that are included in a lot of more comprehensive tree plans that you'll see these days. Banning soil drenching treatment for Emerald Ash Bor, that's the over-the-counter pesticide, insecticide that you just dump into the ground right around the base of the tree. It's frowned upon compared to injection, which goes into the tree and stays in the tree. Again, just something to protect the environment and groundwater. And the third item was protecting legacy trees on private property. Basically, if someone has a large specimen, specimen tree, it's got a nice diameter, it's in good health, before they could just go and take that down on private property, we would have some sort of review process. And again, this isn't Big Brother trying to tell people what to do, but we want to send a message that we do value our trees in the city, and there has to be some reason behind just willy-nilly plopping down a really nice tree. So committee said, they were for it, so I'm going to go and draft those into the tree ordinance, and then we'll vote when that's ready. The other item was part of our Blue Zone project. The city needs to come up with at least one new community garden. So I've talked to a property owner near the Howard Park, where the farmer's market is held, about potentially doing one over there. One of the problems with farmers, or with community gardens, is putting them in a convenient location, so they actually get used, and they don't just weed over. So I figure, well, this is actually a place where people gather weekly, people who have an interest in local food production, maybe some of the vendors could, could hold little workshops, how to grow certain things. So I'm going to talk to the farmer's market organizers about that. We could also do private property, or not private property, we could do public property. There's some ideas there. So we just need to get one community garden established this year as part of our Blue Zone. So more on that later. That's pretty much, anything else, guys?
I just wanted to add that we had requested to find out what the total number of properties were that were going to be affected by the solid waste at MUM. And I would like to see that at our next meeting, when we bring this up for the vote for the council, as the decision of the committee, because we were unclear on how many were actually out there, but...
I've got that list. I'll try to, I'll get that out this week, actually, before the meeting, just so everybody has a good chance to look over it. But they're all in, a lot of them are in just a couple of areas, but yeah, I'll get that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good report, Michael. Next, Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee met on January 2nd for just a few minutes, and our mayor has asked us to look at current practices on the way or methods in which city employees are evaluated. So I think we're going to do that this year, and determine if any changes or recommendations should be made to the council to bring those up to date in any significant way.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Doug. Martha, Property Committee?
Property Committee also met briefly on the 2nd of January. And actually, we have a meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday regarding gymnastics situation. And so we will be meeting this Thursday evening at 5:00. And hopefully, we'll be meeting with Eric and discussing that. So at the present time, that's pretty much the Property Committee report.
Thanks, Martha. Ways and Means also met on January 6th, and there were several issues that we considered. One was kind of an accounting issue, just how to provide funding for our sustainability coordinator, since it came out of loss last time, and so there was just discussion about use of loss in general. There is a general concern that we, that we're all feeling about the, the loss of commercial property tax revenue. We understand from the state that, you know, some of that revenue is going to be backfilled, they say, to the cities for the next two years. But we feel that it's very important that we proceed with our eyes open, with our, you know, with that situation in mind, that in fact, that our revenues could be declining because of this new initiative. And so that's, that's a very serious concern of the Ways and Means. We had a discussion about Park and Rec advertising, which this year will be much less, much smaller than it was last year, apparently, which, you know, we're happy to have Park and Rec advertise, it was just a concern that there was a, quite a big expenditure there. We also, I had mentioned, I felt, when we really look into, you know, the functioning of our city government, we have to be very careful about adding full-time employees in general. Because the liability incurred to the city by the ultimate, you know, benefits that the employees receive over time after they retire, may not be covered by each year's budget. We've seen that in other cities, that's a national trend. And so just in general, notwithstanding the fact that we may be having, you know, less income because of commercial property tax rate decline, we have to be really careful about hiring full-time people. And the last one was something that I had researched also. There are a number of communities around the country, and a few specifically here in Iowa, that have used a program called LEAN to evaluate themselves, how well they're doing, and how to plan, you know, their activities in such a way that makes them most efficient and ensures that they have best customer service in mind. And so there was some suggestion that the city look at that. I know that there's a lot of quote-unquote initiatives that, that go around, and, you know, one, always a fear of starting a new thing like this, is that we spend a lot of time thinking about what we're doing instead of actually doing things. And so that is an issue. On the other hand, just simply doing things the same way every year, just because that's the way we have always done them, is not necessarily a good thing either. And having some attention on, on our operations in a, you know, a new light, a new, a new vision on our, the way we operate, often can lead to dramatic savings. And Fort Dodd specifically had some very good results with this. So we'll just see as, as time and energy and ability move ahead, if we, you know, if we can do that. I know you weren't quite sure at the time, but since then, you told me that you had actually bought that book and recommended it to the department chair, so that was great. There was a book, there's also a website called iowapformance.org, which is from the Iowa LEAN Association, and there are some communities that are members of that, so check that out if you're interested. So that was our Ways and Means report. Kevin, did you have any, anything as far as administrative report?
I do not. Do any department heads have anything that would like to announce? Okay, I guess that does our report.
Okay. Well, we do have a matter to discuss in closed session, so I will take an...
Move to adjourn to closed session.
Motion by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin?
Daryl.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. So we'll adjourn our meeting, go into closed session.